All set.
Projector's out. Did we already go over that? There's nothing up there.
Do we have the projector, the big one?
Thanks, Joe.
Yeah. Good evening. Let's call this Tuesday, October 16th, 2018, meeting of Middletown City Council's order. Please stand and join me in a moment meditation and I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori.
Here.
Mr. Bohannon.
Here.
Mr. Moon.
Here.
Mr. Mulligan.
Here.
Mayor Mulligan.
Here.
All right, Acting City Manager Susan Cohen, good evening. We'll go ahead and get started with the city manager reports.
The only thing I have this evening is the budget presentation for the public safety section. Mr. Burton is joining us today to present that to you.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Burton.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So tonight, we're going to go over the public safety portion of the budget presentation. Last presentation was the non-public safety. Just a reminder that after tonight, we will have three weeks before the first reading of the budget on November 6th, and then two weeks after that on the 20th, and it will be hopefully approved and enacted prior to the end of the year for the 1st of January. So just a quick recap on what you saw last time is currently we're projecting the general fund end at a 21.1% balance at the end of 2018, and budgeting the 2019 ending balance to be 15.5%. There was a decrease in non-public safety personnel cost, and the biggest piece of that, which will be reflected in tonight's presentation, is community development salaries of $335,000 moving to police administration from community revitalization. Thank you. It's a little tough to see up there, for me at least, but this is just a summary of both divisions, and the following slides will break those down. Public safety totals are up about 0.6%, police 3.3%, and fire is actually down 2.6%. We'll get into how that kind of factors into everything. And then down below, you'll see net total expenditures are actually up 6.7%. So the reason for that, expenditures are only up 0.6, but net effect on the general fund is up 6.7% because 2018 had $937,000 in reimbursements from the SAFER grant, and also assistance firefighters' grant for SCBA equipment of $337,000. Both of those are zero in the 2019 budget. We're hopeful that both of those will be a factor in 2019. We're hopeful that we'll get a SAFER grant for the current 12 firefighters who are on the grant to retain those 12. The grant application period begins in December, and they'll start announcing award recipients in March. So hopefully by the 1st of April, we'll know something, we'll know how many, what the terms are. But the budget before you has zero for all of these reimbursements. The Division of Fire will also apply for an assistance firefighters' grant, once again. The total cost of that, how much our portion would be, all of that's unknown at this point, but they will be applying for some type of equipment in 2019, so that would be added into the budget. That would come before you requesting to move forward with that grant application. And the increase in police does include the community development salaries being transferred to police admin. So if we back those out, we'd be looking at just over a million dollar increase, or 5.1%. Go ahead, please, thank you. So Division of Fire breakdown, fire administration sees a small increase. Fire operations is down 312,000, and the reason for that is the SCBA equipment I just mentioned. We had to budget for that expense in 2018, which is about 375,000. That's out of the 2019 budget, so that's the biggest portion of that increase. And then fire prevention and training is up slightly, and that is mostly due to increasing the overtime in that budget. If you remember, for the 2018 budget, we moved three employees from fire ops to fire prevention. We didn't move any additional overtime to that budget when that happened. We probably should have then, we're cleaning that up now. Then once again, this reflects the SAFER grant reimbursement and AFG grant reimbursement being in 2018 and not in 2019. So they're down about 2.6% on the expenditure side, up 11.4% overall. But once again, that's with $0 coming back in reimbursements in 2019.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are there any big vehicle expenses in this budget for 2019?
So I can't recall in the garage fund what we budgeted in 2019. There's no fire trucks, I can't remember for sure if there's a medic unit, but it hasn't impacted this budget at all.
Okay.
They're putting their normal depreciation amount into the garage fund for the purchase. So if it is, it's not, nothing extravagant or above ordinary in the 2019 budget.
Thank you.
Please. Division of Fire goals and objectives for 2019 is continue to implement the recommendations of the 2017 strategic planning study throughout 2019 fiscal year. Review implementation of the results of the 2018 deployment and staffing analysis conducted by the Ohio Fire Chiefs Association. Reduce fire and EMS calls for service by 15% through using the address management system software. Look at some false alarm reduction strategies and appropriate dispatch triage. Prepare and train all city departments and divisions on the community disaster plan by the end of the year. Continue cooperation with key organizations in the city staff on opioid overdoses and reducing those by 10% by December 31st, 2019. We mentioned the SCBA grants, so continue to apply for capital grants for purchase and replacement of equipment, and develop a fire administration succession plan to prepare future leadership for the Division of Fire.
Mr. Burton?
Yeah, go ahead.
Before you move on, as I look in a little bit deeper, it looks like personnel costs are actually up 300,000, whereas most of the cuts are coming from commodities. It looks like last year was just kind of like an artificially high spike from 302 to 673, and now down to 261.
Yes.
What would be typical purchases there, and was there a reason maybe last year was?
So a big, yeah, a big portion of that being higher last year was the SCBA equipment. So we had to budget that expense, I think it was 372,000, and we got the 337,000 back. But we have to budget the full amount on the expense side, so that's the reason for the big increase there.
Okay.
The Division of Police overall has a 3.3% increase, just over $400,000. The biggest increase is in police administration, which involves those four positions moving out of community development into police admin, also moving the animal control officer out of community revitalization into police administration, and a new administrative assistant to help with the chronic nuisance and all of the consolidated efforts in the Division of Police in 2019. Criminal investigation has one less officer in 2019's budget. This was due to the anticipated retirement of one of our injured officers. So if you recall, in 2018, we added an additional officer to that budget, expecting the retirement of the other officer. So we are losing a position in the budget, but as far as employees actually out on the street, there's no change there. Uniform patrol is essentially flat, narcotics is increasing slightly along with police services and jail management. The other more significant increase is dispatch, up 10%, which the biggest reason for that is we're adding a dispatcher position in the 2019 budget. That's to hopefully help curb some officer overtime. We currently have both firefighters and police officers having to work dispatch at times. We had that position at a lower rate, hopefully cut back on some of that overtime we're seeing in that division. The Division of Police goals and objectives, crime and calls for service reduction, continue to reduce Part 1 crimes, consolidate all the nuisance activities into police admin. We've talked about what we're doing in order to do that. Continue the use of task force strategies to address crime hotspots, and then improve the use of the address management software to better our neighborhood policing. And the last slide is just showing you the staffing changes for 2019. Increase in police is mostly due to the moving of people. It's not necessarily an increase on the city budget overall. We are adding the dispatcher and adding an admin assistant, but you're losing one officer in the other positions, animal control and the four housing code specialists are being moved into police admin. And then fire operations are staying the same. And once again, this budget keeps all of the 12 firefighters that are currently funded on the SAFER grant in the 2019 budget, and assumes $0 are being reimbursed. So that 15.5% budgeted general fund balance, any reimbursements we get through those grants brings that expected balance up. Happy to answer any questions, and once again, throughout the next three weeks, if questions, comments, concerns, please reach out, and we'll get those answered.
Any other questions, Mr. Burton?
Great, thank you. Thank you.
And that was on my head.
All right, thanks very much, Ms. Cohen. All right, we have guest speaker this evening. I'd like to invite Randy Quisenberry from Council on Aging, up for a brief presentation. Good evening, thanks for joining us this evening.
Good evening, thank you very much. I'm going to hand out some annual reports before I get started. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Well, I've got some extras I'll leave behind if anybody'd be interested. My name's Randy Quisenberry, I'm with the Council on Aging in southwestern Ohio, and I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to share some information about a very important program to Council on Aging and I think the city of Middletown. I work in the Provider Services Department. The ESP program is the elderly services program, and that's the program I'm going to talk about. That is funded with taxpayer money from the Butler County Senior Citizens Levy. 92% of the funding for this program comes from that levy. Without this levy, this program doesn't exist. Currently, in the city of Middletown, there are 987 citizens on the ESP program. That represents 26% of the Butler County population on ESP. Currently, and what the program does is provide services to seniors, meals on wheels, home care assistance, that can be homemaking, that could be bathing and toileting, cleaning, grocery shopping, and also medical transportation, and the alert buttons, the medical alert devices, the equipment that's in the home. Those are just some of the programs we have. Currently enrolled in the program, there are 356 people in Middletown receiving non-emergency transportation. In Butler County, there are 1,183 people getting meals on wheels. And there are 2,157 people getting medical response equipment from this program. There's a local company, Central Connections, that operates six congregant meal sites in Butler County, three of which are in Middletown. And we had a void for congregant meals in the city of Hamilton. There were no congregant meal sites in the city of Hamilton effective at the beginning of the year. I reached out to Central Connections, they said that they would prepare, they self-produce meals. They said they would prepare and deliver meals to the city of Hamilton. And currently, they're delivering between 70 and 90 meals to Bell Tower in the Lindenwald section of Hamilton, and on Tuesdays, and that's five days a week, and on Tuesdays and Thursdays, they're delivering meals to Booker T. Washington Community Center in Hamilton. So just a great partnership, you know, they're located right here in Middletown, but they, you know, they saw a need and they supported the Council on Aging to serve seniors, and they dedicated themselves to help us open those two new facilities. So I really thank the people over at Central Connections, you've got a good group of people over there. As I mentioned, 92% of the funding for this program comes from the levy. The levy was last passed in 2015, it's going out again in 2020. In 2015, it passed by the largest margin ever, 74.4% of Butler County voters voted in support of this levy. And really just kind of giving a mid-levy update on some of our programs. To be eligible for the program, you must be a Butler County citizen, and you must be of 65 years of age or older, and you must be unable to perform certain basic daily activities. Give you some stats, according to the US Census and the Scripps Gerontology Center at Miami, 19% of Butler County citizens are 60 years or older. And by the year 2030, that'll be 25%. A quarter of our population will be 60 or older by 2030, that's 12 years from now. Some more data, nearly one-third of residents aged 65 or older have a physical and/or cognitive disability, and more than 1 in 10 live near the federal poverty level. A combination of lower income, living alone, and a disability contribute to the need for community support. Not only is the elderly service program compassionate, it is also cost-effective. It costs taxpayers $296 a month to help a resident on the elderly services program, compared to more than $4,000 if they were in a nursing home using Medicaid tax dollars. The typical elderly services program client is a 77-year-old woman who lives alone on an income of about $22,000 a year. Due to declining health and mobility, she is unable to perform activities such as housework, driving, bathing, preparing food, or managing medications. She needs help, but not a nursing home. So I've shared a lot of information with you today. In the annual report, I'd like to just point out, there's a resident that's on the elderly services program featured, his name is Ralph, he's a Middletown citizen, Vietnam vet, double amputee, and he worked at the Middletown Journal for more than 20 years. So he's featured in our annual report. He's the kind of guy, or male or female, that benefits from this program. He's still able to live somewhat independently, in his own home, with the help he's receiving from the elderly services program. So I shared some information with you, I thank you once again for your time and support of what we do for the people of Middletown that are eligible for this program. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
How do residents find out about the program?
Well, we do have, we have a lot of community outreach, you know, we have care managers that go out into the field. We have websites, you know, Council on Aging, Help for Seniors. I can get you as many brochures or annual reports as we can get, but I think mostly it's word of mouth.
I just wonder if especially now that we've got more code enforcement. I went on a ride-along, sorry about my voice, it's the Bengals game. But I went on a ride-along last year with one of our officers, and just going into some homes where we saw code violations because they had things on porches, what have you, but when you get in there, you realize it's an older man, he's incontinent, he probably needs this kind of help. So is this something that we can be putting together as we're out in these neighborhoods?
Absolutely, you know, we would love that, you know, we love to get referrals. You know, I've done ride-alongs for Meals on Wheels, and it's not just a meal delivery, it's a safety check. Oftentimes, the only person that sees that senior that day is the person that brings that meal. You know, and when it was 95 degrees out, you know, these weren't just meals, these are safety checks. But, you know, we, you know, in Butler County with this program, our census has been flat. You know, and we're working on ways to get outreach out there and build that census. Because in other counties, we do five counties, the census is growing. So, you know, any ideas or any support you can get? I think Amy knows how to get ahold of me, I believe. Larry know how to get ahold of me. So just, you know, we would love to, you know, get more involved, you know, and build that census, get the word out. You know, our care managers are out doing a real, real good job, but we subcontract most of the services, right? They're not Council on Aging employees ringing the doorbells, dropping off the meals, or ringing the doorbell and going in and doing the bathing or the cleaning. We subcontract that out. But yeah, we would love to get the word out, you know, to help as many people as we can.
Any other questions for Mr. Quisenberry? All right, thank you, appreciate the work.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right. I do have one citizen comment card this evening, I'd like to invite Mr. Gerald Winters, Withersdown. Withers, Withers, I thought that was an N, Withersdown. Good evening, if we could get your name and address for the record, please?
Thank, my name is Gerald Withers, I live in Wildwood, and thanks for the opportunity to speak to you guys. I'm hot on safety, and I mean by these people who drive in this town. I've lived in Wildwood, like I said, 30 years, just about on the corner of the 800 block of University and Richardson Drive. And they come around the corner, and if they're not doing 60, they're doing 70. It's a residential neighborhood. Our police are taxed already fighting the opioid crisis and other issues. I've had the police come out and put up the little speed thing, and it done wonders for the time that it worked and it was there. Now they're back to the old Indy 500 routine. I've contacted the state police, they have come out, and I've seen them write many a ticket. But I think to ease the burden, I think we need a red light there, right there at that intersection. I mean, they're coming around the corner, and they're flying. And I know one day I got a little irate about it, at that time I had a BMW Roadster. I started to pursue the guy, but I quit at 60. I mean, try it in the mornings or in the afternoons, and it does no good sitting a police officer in front of NAPA when traffic is flashing their lights, coming and going, to pre-warn the drivers what lies ahead. But with that little traffic signal thing, doing the speed limit, telling them what their speed was, it's amazing how they slowed down, and they even continued to slow down for the three days that it was broke before they moved it. And now it's back to business as usual, and I don't know who I talk to, but I would appreciate it if the city would consider putting a red light there. It is a residential neighborhood.
Okay.
It starts 35 on Sorg, all the way around, and some people in our own police department don't know the speed limit through there from the last accident was there. And, you know, check with the police department how many tickets they have written there, and the state police, and I think you'd be amazed. And I appreciate the time speaking to you.
Okay, thanks for coming down, we'll have the city manager.
Chief, the chief police, Rodney Mutersbaugh's over there, he'd be happy to talk to you about the consent.
Yeah, so, okay.
Good deal.
Thank you for coming down this evening.
Thank you very much.
All right, that brings us to our consent agenda, Ms. Gank.
Your consideration, this evening we have to receive and file the board condition minutes from the cemetery board of July 18th, 2018, and the park board from August 13th, 2018, to confirm the temporary personnel appointment of Emma Jones to the position, excuse me, of Treatment Plant Assistant Lab Analyst, Department of Public Works and Utilities, Division of Water Treatment, to confirm the conditional appointment of Marietta Frazier to the position of part-time bus driver, Department of Community Revitalization, Division of Transit, to enter into a professional services contract with WSP USA Incorporated to create a Middletown transportation plan for inclusion into the new city master plan under development, and to request approval to purchase a new Ford Transit Evidence van off the ODAS contract for the Division of Police in the total amount of $27,692.50 from Middletown Ford.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions as listed on the consent agenda? Second, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
All right, we have one motion out of this evening.
To enter into a contract with Municipal and Contractors Sealing Products Cincinnati, Ohio, in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for the rehabilitation and relining of manholes.
All right, Ms. Cohen, anything to present from the staff report?
Your honor, I believe this is routine, it's been through the vetting system for the bids and asking you to approve it. Right.
Okay, any questions regarding the motion item? All right, I have a motion to enter into a contract with Municipal Contractors Sealing Products Cincinnati, Ohio in an amount not to exceed $150,000 for the rehabilitation and relining of manholes.
So moved.
Second, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That brings us to council comments, start the scene with Mr. Mulligan.
Thank you, your honor. Had the opportunity to attend the Kingswell Seminary Impact Gala earlier this month with a few other city representatives, and I offer my thanks for their hospitality, and it was a celebration of various community members who are making a positive impact in Middletown. And two of the award recipients were our own Donna Beauregard from the Parks Department and Chief Mutersbaugh from the Police Department, so special congratulations to them. And it was a heartwarming evening in that it was a good reminder that our faith communities, along with our city government, so many volunteers are coming together to improve Middletown in so many different ways. And then offer congratulations to Art Central Foundation, had a chance to attend their Saturday night fundraiser this weekend where they opened up their new first floor that's been renovated. And then a reminder to council and our viewers at home about the Kiwanis Annual Pancake Breakfast, which will take place at a new location, the Fraternal Order of Eagles on First Avenue on the morning of Saturday, November 3rd. So that is all I have, thank you.
Very good, Mr. Bohannon.
Nothing this evening.
All right, Ms. Vettori.
Nothing.
Doesn't the Steelers win? I won't get there. Vice Mayor, Moon?
Mr. Mulligan took everything I was going to say, so nothing this evening.
All right, well, thank you. I just want to make one announcement, that I will be presenting the State of the City address on November 1st, it's a Thursday, at 6:00 PM. I'll be presented at yet another new location at the high school in the community room, and look forward to that, I'll be joined by Dr. Urso and Marlon Stiles from the schools to present, they'll present an update on the school activity, and look forward to sharing the good things that are happening here in the city. So November 1st, 2018, 6:00 PM at the high school. And one last reminder, since we don't meet before then, we have Halloween and trick-or-treat coming up at the end of the month, so remind folks to be careful when they're out there, and look forward to the kids having a good time. And we've got trick-or-treat here at the city building, too, don't we?
Still building on the 30th.
30th, yeah, so lots of good times, so don't let the kids have all the candy at once, I guess. Always share with their parents. And with that, Ms. Cohen, we can move to our legislation for this evening.
Thank you. We have two items that prior to getting started are going to be asked to be treated as emergency. It asks for a motion that we have charter requirements for two readings in 30 days to enactment regarding Resolution R 2018-27 and Ordinance O 2018-71.
I move to waive the charter provisions requiring readings on two separate days and to declare the previously read resolution and ordinance an emergency measure and read one time only.
Second. Okay, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori.
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
First matter this evening is Ordinance O 2018-68, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract with Phoenix Safety Outfitters for the purchase and repair of fire turnout gear, and this is a second reading.
Okay, would Mr. adopt?
So moved.
Second. Any other questions or comments, we had a presentation on this previously. All right, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan.
Yes.
Ms. Vettori. Mr. Bohannon.
Yes.
Mr. Moon.
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan.
Yes.
The next matter is Ordinance O 2018-69, an ordinance authorizing a third amendment to the Community Reinvestment Area Agreement between the city of Middletown and Historic Gents Tower LLC. This is also a second reading.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. There was also a previous presentation on this. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori? Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Number three is Ordinance O. 2018-70, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Branstad Carroll Incorporated for engineering and grant administration services for the rehabilitation of the airport taxiway lighting system. This is also a second reading.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Item number four is Resolution R. 2018-23, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2018. Is this from the general fund? This is also a second reading.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All right. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Next matter is number five, Resolution R. 2018-24, a resolution authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant and enter into a grant agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation, Office of Aviation for Taxiway Lighting System Project at the Middletown Regional Airport. This is a second reading.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
The sixth matter this evening is Resolution R. 2018-25, a resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Department of Transportation, United States of America, for a grant under the Federal Transit Administration Act of 1991 as amended.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
All right. We had a presentation on this before, too. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Next matter is Resolution R. 2018-26, a resolution authorizing the filing of applications for year 2019 with the Ohio Department of Transportation for grants under the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program. Second reading.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
So moved.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Bohannon?
Yes.
Mr. Moon?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Next matter is the first of the emergencies. This would be Resolution R. 2018-27, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio, for the period ending December 31st, 2018, and declaring an emergency. This involves the general fund, the nuisance abatement fund, and the airport fund.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. We had a presentation on this previously. Any other questions or comments? Anything to add, Ms. Cohen?
I don't believe so, your honor. It's both three sets of appropriations, one for the police, one for the airport work, and one for the NIP program.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?